And welcome to the Village of Bartlett's Committee of the Whole Meeting. I'll entertain a motion. Oh, with the quick please call the roll.
Trustee Aaron's absent. Cameron?
Here.
Carbonaro?
Yes, here.
Martin?
Here.
Ranky?
Here.
Shipman?
Here.
President Wallace?
Here. The items on the agenda this evening fall under planning and zoning and I will turn this over to trustee Cameron.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have three items on the agenda tonight. The first would be with petitioner Gloria Chavez and Jerry Nelson. The subject site is 1445 Newcastle Lane and the request is for a variation on their side yard. At this point in time, I turn this over to Jim to give us a little more detail on this.
Thank you trustee Cameron. Ms. Chavez and Mr. Nelson would like to build a third car garage addition to their existing home at 1445 Newcastle Lane. They are asking for a 1.56 foot variation from the required seven and a half foot side yard to construct that third bay for the garage. It's a 20.8 percent reduction of the required side yard. The garage addition is approximately nine feet by 27 and a half feet. The existing house is 14.94 feet from the property line and if they were approved, the addition would be located only, will be located 5.94 feet from the property line. This picture gives you an idea of what it would look like in relationship to the house next door. It would be 11 and a half feet from the property, which is 11 and a half feet from the property, approximately 17 feet separation between the two buildings. The zoning board of appeals reviewed this on July 11th and recommended approval. I'm showing you pictures submitted at that public hearing by the petitioner. These are pictures of the neighbors' bay, our third car bay addition that would look similar to what they are planning on building. And this is on a property also on Newcastle Lane. We have shown on this slide the variations that have been granted throughout the neighborhood and the subject property. There are others for different variations for one-story additions and such throughout the area. The zoning board of appeals did recommend approval and it is before you for discussion prior to going on to the village board for final vote. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer. Mr. Nelson is here too.
Any questions by the board? Any questions from anyone in the audience?
Well, let me ask you this. Are the neighbors okay with this?
At the public hearing, one of the neighbors came out and raised a concern over it as you see in the minutes. Generally, I think the, that was the only one that came out. We did not get any calls or questions or any other neighbors showing up that voiced a concern. There were other people at the meeting.
But there was no concern from the neighbor adjoining the property?
Not that was expressed at the meeting or in writing.
Jim, when you have, I'm looking at that map that you have up there. I don't know if you know off the top of your head, but out of these variations, how many of them were the addition of a garage? Or how many of them were like the addition of dormers or bedrooms or rec rooms or?
Just looking at them from the, you probably can't see it from here. Most of these are for one-story additions. They don't specify if they're for garages or not. So there are some that could be.
I just don't ever remember a garage coming before, so that's all.
Yeah.
I mean of this nature.
The, it's possible some of them are, typically when we do a garage addition, which we've had throughout the village, it's a side yard variation. The only one that, that comes is that one up there off of what's close to Stonebridge, the blue, the dark blue one. That's the only side yard variation. But I don't know if that's a garage. The garage that they showed the picture of did not need a variance because that lot is wide enough to accommodate that extra garage bay.
And we're actually, so now the variance is for about a foot and a half, I think?
That's right.
So hypothetically speaking, if they were to make, and I'm not saying this is going to happen, but hypothetically speaking, if the garage were a foot and a half thinner, they wouldn't even need the variance. They could go ahead and build it.
Hypothetically, yes, but I, the typical bay width for a garage addition-
I'm not suggesting that, I'm just saying-
Right, but you're right. If they were a foot and a half less, they wouldn't-
In other words, we don't have any prohibitions against three-car garages in that-
No, no. There's a lot of three-car garages. It's just this case is a little narrow. If you look at this, let me point back to the, it's really due to the lot configuration and the house position on there. Robert is probably pointing out the house has actually shifted over a little bit to the, which would be the where it says proposed addition. There was actually, there's actually a little room. You could have shifted the house to the south a little bit and probably picked it up. But it's just the configuration of the lot. So that does show a hardship on there.
Any other questions? If not, then I would move that we pass this on to the village for a final vote.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a commercial vehicle and residential zoning district sunset clause. And I think I'll just go ahead and let Jim explain this a little more in detail as well since this is something that came in and needs to be modified apparently.
Back in 2010, actually prior to 2010, our commercial vehicle residents came to the staff because we were, I will say it's the downturn of the economy. There was a lot of people that were bringing their vehicles home, people starting businesses up out of their home that had possibly lost their job. And so they came to us, a lot of contractors if you will, and asked us if we could work on an ordinance that made the commercial vehicle code a little more amenable for them to keep their vehicles at home. Well, the long and short of it is, is that the village board felt that that was something that was good to do at that time. And so in 2010, we adopted an ordinance that's attached that kind of, I won't say relaxed the regulations, but it made them pretty specific to allow probably a little bigger commercial vehicle and a little more specifically defined commercial vehicle with logos and writing on it and equipment and alleviated some of the violations. Back at that time, we were probably running at five violations a month for commercial vehicles complaints. We adopted the ordinance and the commercial vehicle violations went down to one a month. Majority of the complaints were there are large trucks that were visible. We eliminated the large trucks because we got very specific in our requirements. Diesel vehicles, noise, the advertising was a problem, and equipment. So when we adopted the ordinance, we researched a lot of surrounding communities. We went, we actually went to the residents, the contractors, held public hearings, had their input, hammered out a, an ordinance that we felt was sufficient. We brought that to the village board. The board felt it was a good ordinance. They adopted it, but they did put a three-year sunset clause in there. Lo and behold, that three years is almost up. It will be up in September of this year. We're bringing this back to you because we feel that since the ordinance has been working pretty effectively and we've basically been able to eliminate really the large semis, the large straight trucks, those types of things because the ordinance deals specifically with the types of licenses and the height of the vehicle and those types of things, that we feel that the ordinance works and that we would recommend eliminating the sunset clause.
Is there any discussion? And I would recommend that we follow through what the village has suggested and that we, with regards to the regulation, the commercial vehicles in the residential zoning district, ordinance 2010-075 be amended to remove the sunset clause. And I guess we would pass this on to the board for a final vote.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. And our last item on the agenda for tonight, from the planning and zoning at least, is the Walgreens and the petitioner is the Bartlett Venture 1 LLC. The subject site is the northeast corner of Route 59 and Sterns Road. And the request is for rezoning and resubdivision and special use permit and variations. And once again, I think you've got everything ready to go, don't you Jim?
Thank you trustee Cameron. This is a petition the village staff and our consulting, excuse me, engineers have worked very hard on. We've worked with the petitioner. The petitioner is a longstanding business owner and they own the Brewster Creek Shopping Center, Bartlett Venture 1, is represented by Mr. Cortese and Wayne Rogers and his people. We're very excited that Walgreens wants to locate on this intersection. As you know, it's been vacant for quite some time. They've spent months working on a lease agreement with the property owner of the corner site, the old gas station. There's a lot of issues with the property. Not only is it vacant, it was a gas station. It has some environmental issues which the petitioner has addressed adequately. We've hired an engineering, environmental engineering consultant to review that. They've achieved or are going to achieve that cleanup and the, what they call the environmental remediation of the site. There's also a lot of traffic issues. They've hired an expert traffic consultant and we have hired an expert traffic consultant to review that. The petition is for rezoning the corner of the property to B2 for the local convenience shopping district to B3 neighborhood shopping district, which is what the entire Brewster Creek Shopping Center is zoned. There's a resubdivision of the property because it involves taking the corner lot and combining it with a portion of the lot that the Brewster Creek Center is on. So they're going to take some of their parking lot and add it to the corner lot to make a bigger lot for Walgreens. The resubdivision is for lots one and two. Their special use permit is for packaged liquor sales for beer, wine, and liquor. As you know, Walgreens currently has a beer and wine sales at its current site. Because it's a new site, they will have to move that and get a whole new license and get a special use for this property. Their variations are for a 34-foot reduction in the 50-foot corner side yard along Route 59 because they'd like to place the building close to the corner. A 1.4-foot reduction of the 30-foot rear yard to the north, which is towards the access drive. The canopy encroachment in the required corner side yard and interior side yard of more than three feet for the drive-through. A reduction in the 20-foot interior parkway landscape requirement at Sterns and 59. And the parking encroaches in the 50-foot front and corner side yard. They're also requiring a reduction in the parking stall measurement of 180 feet and a reduction in the number of parking spaces on Lot 1 by nine spaces. The site is surrounded by commercial, as everybody knows. It's a major access point to the village, major entranceway. This will add a nice look to the site. I'll get into some of the work in the site plan. Again, I talked about the consolidation. There's a truck delivery and a drive-through facility which Walgreens currently does not have. And as anybody knows, the current Walgreens, the freestanding sites all have drive-throughs. Adds to the production of the facility. They'll be nicely landscaped all around the perimeter and they've prepared a landscape plan that's to our landscape ordinance. Here's what it will look like. It's a nice beautiful building, contemporary, right at the corner. The parking lot is the site of the environmental remediation. So that's why that parking lot has to stay there to cap that, some of the cleanup for that area. And the petitioner is here. I will try to answer any questions. They are here to answer any of your questions. This new building will be 14,000 plus square feet. Our consultants have reviewed it. Our staff has reviewed it. Our police department has reviewed it, fire department. Everybody has made their comments. The petitioner has been very gracious and addressed all the comments and has not argued too much with us.
Is the loading dock area going to be sufficient for your needs?
Yes, it will be. My name is Wayne Rogers. I'm with the Bartlett Ventures 1. Our address is 2045 South Arlington Heights Road in Arlington, Illinois. With me tonight are the owners of this property, Tom and Brian Pelkith, if they stand up. And the J&amp;B Trust is Brandon and Jason Cortese. They are also partners on the Brewster Creek Center. They are long, well, they were born in this town. Jason still lives here. So they've been involved in the center. They've been doing other things out there over the years. Jim has answered most of the questions and comments that I was going to address. So we have with us tonight our traffic engineer, our engineer, and our architect to answer any questions that you may have. One thing that has always come up, our architect has made sure that the mechanicals are screened on the roof. And it's always been a big question in the past that's been taken care of. And I'm here to answer any of your questions or anyone else here.
All right, I'll go first. Keep your traffic guy handy. I think by their, by their study and we went through volumes of traffic study for a proposed bank kitty-corner to this location. And I think it's by your own traffic guy's information here, this is probably one of the worst intersections in town as far as wait times and traffic backup. You gave it a grade F, I believe. Our engine, our traffic study engineer, I'm sorry, I don't know your official title, gave it also basically failing grades as well. I realize that under your study, the addition of a Walgreens in it of itself, based on your study, will probably not increase the traffic so much at that intersection. Is that a fair-
That's correct.
-kind of summation of all your long work? And I don't mean to minimize what you did. But my question is, looking at this, it's my hope that one day IDOT or somebody will come along and they'll fix this intersection. And that would include dedicated right turn lanes. With the construction the way it is now, I'm not sure where we can put a dedicated right turn lane on westbound Sterns Road that's not going to drive up and over the corner of the lot there. So I guess that's, maybe that's as much the architect as it is the traffic study guy. But I have concerns about that and I'm not sure how that can be addressed or what, how would you like to respond to that?
I do agree with you and you have seen our studies and you have seen the studies that you mentioned. In terms of a right turn lane going west, I'm, I'm sorry. My name is Javier Milan. I'm the traffic engineer for the proposed development. I'm with KLA Incorporated. And in regards to westbound right turn lane on Sterns Road as you're approaching 59, Route 59, the volumes turning right are actually not as high as what you would think. So they probably wouldn't trigger the need for a right turn lane even though, when you look at it, it would be great to have a right turn lane. I believe the right-of-way unfortunately is not there to provide a right turn lane. However, I don't have a specific plans, but I believe the state is currently working on some type of improvement plans along Route 59 to increase in all capacity and that will help that intersection. How much? I don't know because I haven't seen the plans and I don't know what they're applying to. But there, I believe there are some plans going around to do something.
Do you, are you aware of anything, Madam Administrator?
We do know that IDOT and the traffic engineers crack. We don't, haven't seen any plans, but there is the expectation that will be some intersection improvement sometime in the future. And I think clearly there would be dual lefts.
There'll be-
Dual left turn lanes.
On Route 59 and by, by the provision of that, you increase capacity. So you might not have to provide that much green time, let's say, to the northbound and southbound left turn movements because now you're doubling the capacity. So that additional green time, you can provide on Sterns. Even though a right turn lane might not be possible, you're providing more green time for Sterns so you can move it. But once again, we haven't seen anything. We know something is in the process, but we don't know yet.
So, and while I realize you weren't here to study or to re-engineer the Sterns Road, Route 59 intersection, just based on your expertise, it is your belief that even if they did re-engineer the intersection, we likely wouldn't need a right turn lane going westbound Sterns Road at Route 59 to go north on Route 59?
I'm strictly looking at the volumes. Typically, you look at the volumes and you see whether it's going to trigger or warrant the need for a right turn lane. Just looking strictly at volume alone, it doesn't appear like it's warranted.
Okay.
I don't have my little warrant table, but just from my experience and looking at it, it appears that it's not warranted.
And again, I give you the caveat that you weren't here to study that intersection and that particular need. But when, when I looked at this and I went, boy, we'll never get a right turn lane in there. And that was, that was one of my concerns. Okay, that's, anybody else want to talk about?
I got a question. Jim, being that there was a gas station on this property at one time, does the EPA need to test it like 10 years from now or are, once it's clear, they, I'm sorry.
I'm going to let our environmental engineer hire and answer that. He knows that it's announced of-
He'll explain the taco? He'll explain, he'll explain the taco to us? I'm a little ahead of the evening.
Good evening. My name is Gary Deegan. I'm with the firm Deegan and Associates LLC out of Libertyville, Illinois. We've been the village's environmental consultant for a number of years now. Illinois EPA has issued to the prior tank operators, both Clark and BP, what is called a no further remediation letter. That means those property owners and former operators of the tank systems have taken the site to a level of protection that Illinois EPA agrees with in terms of releases to the environment, protection of human health. And that's where Illinois EPA pretty much stops. So they've gone to the no further remediation level. There will not be continuous monitoring as they go forward. However, as development and redevelopment occurs on that property, underwriters, insurers, lenders, villages such as Bartlett, take a look at what is going on on that property that is different from the scenario when a no further remediation letter was issued. And that's where we come in with development conditions that are protective of the environment, protective of users of the property in the future, protective of the village residents. So that's what this process has done. It's taken a step beyond what Illinois EPA has purview on and taken a site-specific plan and made sure the environmental safeguards are still there going forward.
Were the tanks pulled out?
Yes, indeed.
Okay.
I have a question, but I don't know who directed it. Are we still looking at letting people turn left out of this parking lot?
Yes.
Onto, onto Sterns?
Onto Sterns. There's still a, a turning movement and maybe our, do you have a, because we have our traffic consultant here, you can, they can answer your questions as to how effective that's going to be or something like that. We can have Javier or our consultant can answer that.
Okay. We have our traffic consultant here as well?
Yes.
Would he or she-
I wonder if we would be better-
Just to clarify though Vince, I think when I initially reviewed this, I was under the impression that it would be similar to the old gas station and they clarified that for me. It's not going to be, if you remember the old gas station, you could actually turn right into the gas station and you could turn out on the other side.
Right.
Not like that.
Okay.
Yeah.
My concern is the people-
But similar to the entrances and exits that are there right now.
Correct.
Correct.
My concern is the people who are going northbound on 59 who turn onto Sterns and they want to take a left into the parking lot. Because they hold up traffic.
That's right.
And they get ruined it. Then there's the people that go, go ahead, turn left. And then they pull out and they get ruined it. This goes on all the time.
That scenario's not going to change much, but maybe Javier can address that?
I would, if our traffic engineer is here, I'd like to get their opinion.
Okay, you want to hear from Brent Coulter, our traffic engineer. Brent?
Good evening. My name is Brent Coulter with the firm Coulter Transportation Consulting. And maybe I'll just step back a minute and address some of the questions about the overall intersection.
And my apologies, I didn't realize that you were here. And again, I know you weren't hired to answer those questions, but since you are here, I'm curious of your take on that same, my, my concerns.
Yeah. I think I've stated in my reviews and reports that I concur with the Walgreens traffic consultant that, that this site, which is a relocation of the existing Walgreens, is not going to measurably add traffic to the intersection of the shopping center access and Sterns Road or other access points on Sterns and 59. And so from that standpoint, we're really dealing with the relocation of the same use from one part of the center to another. And I'll, I'll come back to the access for the relocated Walgreens in just a second. But to address some of the concerns about the operation of the shopping center access drive on Sterns Road, the solution to that is going to come from IDOT's proposed improvement of 59 and Sterns Road. It's not going to come from, from the-
Construction.
The relocation of the Walgreens within the same shopping center. So it's, that's a major, major intersection improvement. I think phase one or preliminary engineering was started about a month ago on that project. My understanding, talking with IDOT and their consultants, is that the intersection improvement would consist of dual left turn lanes on most of the approaches and perhaps northbound and right, and southbound right turn lanes on Route 59. As Javier noted, that will add significant capacity to the overall intersection, which will allow Sterns Road, especially the east leg and the westbound movements, to flow with much less delay and congestion. The westbound right turn, again, I would have to concur with Javier, is that the westbound right turn movement in and of itself does not warrant a separate right turn lane. But the overall intersection improvement, again, will substantially reduce congestion and delay at that intersection. In the process of going through the phase one preliminary engineering, the scope of this project is large enough that IDOT does anticipate that there will be a public involvement process. So all the local stakeholders, business people, the village obviously, and residents will have an opportunity to comment on the proposed design for this intersection. And I've talked, in my discussions with IDOT, I think they are aware and actually must in the process of using federal dollars, address accident locations in the proximity of the intersection proper. So they are, they will have to include in their report the operation of the Brewster Creek Access, for example, at Sterns Road in the design and analysis of the overall intersection improvement. So I think, I think that project is going to provide the village ultimately with some relief to the operational issues that exist right now on Sterns Road. They have funding for that. Some of it comes from what's called the Region CMAC, Congestion Mitigation and Air Quality Program. So there's funding from that. It is on their multi-year program, I think anticipated for a 2015 construction year. That date can, can sometimes move depending on how quickly they finish the, especially the phase one or preliminary engineering. So with that in mind, I think, I think there's a solution on the horizon. And the solution is going to rest with, with a very big and expensive project, Route 59 and Sterns Road. We want to make sure that the proposed relocated Walgreens does not exacerbate the situation at the Brewster Creek Access with Sterns Road. And I think, working with the developer and with staff, I think we've done that on, on this site plan. For example, the nearest driveway for the Walgreens parking lot on Lot 1 to Sterns Road a little bit at that location will be restricted to right turns only. So you can turn, and right turn out only. So you can turn right out of the parking lot. You can't turn right in at that location. And you can't turn left out and you can't come in from Sterns Road to make a left immediately into that, into that access drive. The drive itself will be angled in such a way that that, that is generally physically impossible to do. impossible to do. There'll also be signs in support of that. I see a little chuckle there. I've, I've been in this business a long time. I've been superintendent of highways for DuPage County. And I can tell you that a combination of signing and geometric design does work. Signing alone?
And tax strips.
Not always.
Yeah.
Not always.
I'm not disagreeing with you.
Okay.
Saying, we also know it's amazing how some people find a way around things, so.
The, the second access to the parking lot will be a full access. That's located further to the interior. We've done studies, the consultant's done studies on the queuing on outbound Brewster Creek Drive at Sterns Road. And, and there should be no issue with traffic stacking up outbound on the Sterns Road, blocking access into or out of that driveway. So I think from that standpoint, the fact that we're talking about either no or negligible minimal increase in traffic for the Walgreens at that location, general location, from a building location to a freestanding location, the fact that we are able to control left turns in the immediate vicinity of the Brewster Creek access at Sterns Road, and the prospect of some significant relief to Sterns, 59, traffic congestion, and not only the operation of Brewster Creek, but some of the other commercial driveways in, in that vicinity of the intersection down the road a couple of years, I think makes me at least pretty comfortable with, with where we're heading on this, so.
Again, I think my question, and I think you've answered it, but should, should this go all the way through to construction, I would hate to see IDOT come a year from now and say, oh, you either got to move your Walgreens or we can't do this now because of that. That's what I'm trying to make sure of. And what you're saying, and I think what I'm hearing from you and the other engineer, is that the location here and based on your studies and your professional opinion, that none of that's going to interfere currently or as far as you can tell in the future with any improvements that I might want to make to that intersection or anything else? The, the physical location of the parking lot, the easements, the sign, those things, correct?
Based on our, our understanding of, of what IDOT intends to do at that location, and they had to put together a preliminary scope of work to apply for and receive the federal congestion mitigation dollars that they got through the region's planning agency. So those are federal dollars. So, so there is a tentative scope of work, and that tentative scope of work, we've been working with in terms of this site review, and especially in terms of things like the, the extension of the bike path, you know, across the property frontage to make sure it's located outside the, the limits of where we think the widening is going to occur on Sterns Road as part of this project. So to the best of our ability, realizing that IDOT has just begun their preliminary engineering based on this preliminary scope of work, I think we've, we've done what we can do at this point.
And all, all of those answers still apply almost no matter what goes into the existing Walgreens?
No, that's hypothetical, I think.
In terms of the, the, the building that they're vacating?
Yeah.
Well, in my opinion, and I've been involved in a number of these cases where tenants of a shopping center building move to a freestanding lot. I, I think it's the best scenario from the standpoint of traffic generation for the village. In other words, the potential for a higher generating traffic use on Lot 1 if Walgreens weren't there is much higher than a higher generating traffic use in the vacated end of a storefront, a long storefront building. And that's just based on my experience. I think you're liable to get, or likely to get some, some fairly minimal traffic generators at that location.
Okay.
Especially compared to the alternative of a freestanding.
And, and I would, I would add, I would think now, from what I'm understanding about this, cars will come in and go into a lot that's not, not being used right now in front of Walgreens, and the ones that are actually utilizing anything else will keep going. Right? I mean, the way it is now, everything's stacked right along the edge. So if you're coming in there now, you're, you're picking up your kids from daycare, you're going to Walgreens, you're going straight in on one road, you're going to park right in front, now you're going to go in and you're going to have some cars going into Walgreens and some will keep going.
Well, yeah, and I think we've, what we've tried to do with, with this Lot 1 Walgreens design is encourage as mu, as much as possible, entry from Route 59. For example, I, I think we've generally agreed that maybe 50% of site traffic is going to be coming from the south on Route 59 going north or coming from the west on Sterns Road going east. If we can capture that traffic at the Route 59 entrance, we avoid having those vehicles stand and wait on Sterns Road in the situations you were talking about where you have people creating a gap, waving them through, and other people not knowing that that's the intent and you have conflicts develop. So the, the right turn only driveway on Route 59 will be reconstructed. It'll be a more modern, larger design, more convenient for, for access. We've even suggested a little bit of a taper area for that to, to further facilitate access at that location. Walgreens will have a, a store sign at that driveway entrance so that, which, which will be visible to that 50% of, of Walgreens traffic coming from the south and from the west so that, again, we hopefully can encourage them to use that access. They don't just see the building at the corner and think that the only way they get there is via Sterns Road. They can come up on 59 of that right in, right out, enter at that location and, and come around, so to speak, the back way.
Got a question. That same turn right there, there's a sidewalk that goes to the back door. Is it, your thoughts that the employees will park over on the north side and then walk across and enter through the back door? Just curious.
I'm going to defer that question to, to Walgreens.
My name's Jim Pavelsek. I'm the president of Base Ten Architects. I'm the architect for the project. That rear door is really means of egress only, so primarily exit, and employees are not expected to use that door. They will come in the front door typically on the store.
Okay. Because if they were going to cross and we got cars turning off 59 going 25, we're going to need to sign our crosswalk right there so Walgreens employees don't get run over. So if that's, if that was what the back door was for.
Well, I actually might have a question, but it might be from Mr. Coulter again. We're a pretty bike-friendly town and we're trying to be even more bike-friendly, and so we're, we're interested in, in continuing to make sure that the bike paths work. And one of the comments you made in your report was that apparently part of this bike path property is on DuPage and part of it is on the Walgreens property or, and that there's a certain degree of liability there. Does that change in some way or does?
Well, I think, I think we've solved that issue. I mean, we have recommended that the bike path be extended. Right now, it stops at, at the Brewster Creek access drive and, and once you cross, you're on a sidewalk. So it's not real conducive to bicyclists who have to change facility types like that. So the, the path will be extended to the corner area.
That I understand.
It will be extended so that it's centered on the existing property line, but, but the, the petitioner is going to dedicate five feet, five feet of frontage from that property line to the north so that the entire bike path will be on public right-of-way under the control and jurisdiction of DuPage County Highway Department. So there is, from that standpoint, there is no mix of private and public liability issues. This will be a, a public bike path on public right-of-way.
So this won't be a contentious issue with the, with DuPage County and the property owners in some way?
I don't believe so. No, this will be-
By dedicating it, we didn't mandate that, but they're proposing to dedicate it as opposed to an easement so it becomes the right-of-way for the road, even though the pavement or curb-to-curb is one width, the right-of-way within which it lies is wider. So if you give another 10 feet to the north, the whole path, so before, if you kept it lined up with the bike to the east path, the east, it would be jockeyed. If they give another 10 feet or five feet, then it still lines up with the, the bike path that's further east and it all goes to the county. So the comments before were, if it were centered, you'd have half on each, but by dedicating an extra five feet, that solves that particular concern. And it'll all be on the county side, which is-
It's hard to see on this diagram, but it's the darker shaded area where Roberta's pointing, that, that's the bike path. And then the, the line, the darker line to the east is the, is the dedication. So the petitioner will dedicate that strip so that, as Brian said, the bike, and Brett, the bike path will all be on future, the county future right-of-way.
And to the best of your knowledge, if the state should come in and do changes to the highway, I guess it's, so here again, it's hypothetical, you don't think that bike path's going to be wiped out in the, in the course of doing that or is that a possibility?
I would not anticipate that, but you know, the state operates under what's called a complete streets policy. So they have to replace in some fashion or form sidewalk or bike path that is disrupted or taken as part of their highway project. Once again, based on our understanding of IDOT's scope at this early stage of the project, we've, we feel that, that, that this bike path location is, is at least at this point the optimal location that we can put it. In the future, would it, might it shift to the north closer to the parking lot because of right-of-way issues or taking by IDOT? That's possible. Probably lose a little landscaping on that strip, but you know, we'll have to wait and see what, what the preliminary engineering looks like.
Fair enough.
Just to clarify, you're not going to plant any elm trees, right?
Ish.
Right. I mean, we've talked, I mean, there are certain horizontal and vertical clearances from the path that have to be maintained.
Is, are these, any of these miniature or they, they can grow full, the trees?
I'm not aware of the specific landscaping elements.
Just to clarify, something coming out of the parking lot, am I going to be able to turn left on Sterns Road?
Yeah, the, the existing Brewster Creek access is striped with two lanes, one outbound left, one outbound right. That, that will remain at least until we get into the IDOT project more. And again, there are a number of options which IDOT may look at at that, at that time. But for the time being, until that project is a little further along, that's, that driveway will operate as it currently does.
And then coming down east on Sterns, I can still turn left into Walgreens?
You'll turn into the shopping center. One of the places you can go is Walgreens, yes.
Thank you. What's the build time?
For-
How long will this take to build? Do you have an estimate?
We're looking at five months to build a building, opening up in March of next year.
Do you have any plans for the existing Walgreens building?
Not at this time. Walgreens won't vacate until the new building is up and then we'll try and lease it.
Thank you.
I'll reserve.
Any other-
Onto our citizens groups.
Any other questions? Then the staff has recommended forwarding the petition to the zoning board of appeals and to the plan commission for the review of the petitioner's request and to conduct their respective public hearings. And so I'd move that, that that would be what we do, follow the course of what the staff is requesting.
Thank you.
Plan commission say.
Yep.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And that is all I have.
All right. If that is on, it on the agenda, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. Moved by trustee Ranky. Seconded by trustee Shipman. Clerk please call the roll.
Trustee Aaronson, Camer.
Yes.
Carbonero.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Ranky.
Yes.